This meeting to all who are able, please the pledge of allegiance. Director Egan is excused this evening. And I will read the land acknowledgement. On behalf of this board and the Cherry Creek School District, I would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the ancestral and unceded lands of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, Ute, Anocheti, and Shakawee people who steward it for several generations. The Anocheti-Shakawee include seven bands, so I would also like to recognize that over forty additional tribal nations likely use this area for trade ceremonies and social gatherings. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda of the March tenth, two thousand twenty-five Regular Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Directors Allen.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Garland.
Aye.
Knowles.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the March tenth, two thousand twenty-five agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Directors Allen.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Garland.
Aye.
Knowles.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we will have reports from our board, starting with Director Allen.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us on this beautiful spring day. Finally, we're finally here. First, I just, Dr. Hanson, you're here? Yes? Dr. Hanson, while you are still known as the most chill Assistant Principal and missed by your students at Campus Middle School, I'd like to thank you and the entire Infinity Middle School community for hosting tonight's event. I'd also like to thank our security and setup teams for hosting this event in our mobile locations, so we can come visit all of the incredible schools in our district. This week is Cherry Creek Reads Week. This year's theme is Read Together, Celebrate Together. It reminds us that literacy is the foundation of learning and opportunity. The featured book, A Face is a Poem by Julie Morsted, encourages readers to recognize and appreciate the uniqueness of every face. And as board members, we have this incredible opportunity to visit our schools and share this book with lots of our students. And today, I got to kick off Boards Week by reading in my son's classroom, which is such an incredible experience. And those fourth graders got such a kick out of this book and had so many comments that I would never have thought of. So, thank you to Principal Romero for inviting me in. He's too (laugh) and also, I love this opportunity to celebrate the power of reading and the connections that we can all make when we read together. And as a board, we're committed to advancing literacy as a core priority in our district's strategic plan. Strong literacy skills open doors to succeed in school, work, and civic life, empowering students to pursue their pathway of purpose. And I just have a couple of congratulations because those winter sports finals are heading our way. Both the Grandview Girls Varsity Basketball Team and the Eagle Crest High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team have made it to the Final Four. I'd like to let everybody know when the Final Four games are because they're really convenient. The girls are Thursday, this Thursday, at eleven AM, and the boys play at twelve forty-five PM. So if anybody is bored in the middle of the school day, please come cheer our students on. And if not, I'm hoping that they make it to the finals because they will both be playing. If they do, the finals are March fifteenth at the, let's see, the boys are at four PM, and the girls are at one fifteen PM at Denver Coliseum. If either of our teams win, I will be there cheering them on. I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Allen. Director Bates?
Thank you. A good evening, and thank you to Infinity Middle for hosting us this evening. And as always, thank you to those who ensure that our meetings can take place remotely and not always in a boardroom. Coming up on March the twenty-seventh, Cherry Creek Schools Foundation will be hosting their annual Elevate Gala. The funds that are raised at this event help support students in CCSD by funding educator-initiative grants, mental health programs, and emergency relief for families in need. If you would like more information, please visit Cherry Creek School District Foundation, ccstfoundation.org. Once again, I would like to remind everyone to look at the state of our public education in our nation, and especially in our state. Last week, Superintendent Smith and CFO Scott Smith sent out a very informative video to all staff and to the community as well on social media. Please view this video and learn how cuts our public education will impact you. Everyone will be impacted in one way or another. Speak up, go to your legislators, and demand that education is fully funded. Public education has taken the hit for far too long, and our kids deserve better. I hope you all have a great spring break with your families and friends, and be safe. And that concludes my comments this evening.
Thank you, Director Bates. Director Knowles?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the comments from my fellow directors. I have no additional comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And my turn. High school students who are part of the Superintendent's Advisory Council recently had the opportunity to visit the Colorado State Capitol, where they engaged with state legislators about the critical issue of school funding. This visit allowed them to voice their concerns directly to policymakers, giving them a firsthand understanding of the legislative process. For these students, it wasn't just about advocating for better resources for their schools, it was about learning how policy decisions are made and understanding the importance of being involved in the civics process. They discussed the long-term impacts that funding or the lack of it can have on the quality education in their communities and made a compelling case for more sustainable solutions. The experience highlighted the importance of learning civics at every level, local, state, and federal. Understanding the intricacies of government helps young people see how their lives are shaped by policies that are often made beyond their school walls. This type of engagement teaches valuable lessons about the interconnectedness of our communities, the role of elected officials, and how citizens, even those who are not yet eligible to vote, can influence change. Advocacy is a powerful tool in democracy, and by participating in the process, these students are not only advocating for their schools, but also learning how to be responsible, active citizens in a democracy. Their visit to the Capitol shows that civic engagement is not bound by age. It is a practice that everyone can and should participate in. Voting is just the minimum. As the future voters of Colorado and the nation, these students are gaining essential knowledge that will serve them for years to come. Educating young people about the political process beyond the act of voting helps them develop a deeper understanding of how their voices can shape policies long before they cast their first ballot. It empowers them to think critically, question decisions, and advocate for the issues that matter to them. This kind of early involvement fosters a generation of thoughtful, engaged citizens who will carry the torch of democracy forward, ensuring that the values of participation, advocacy, and civic responsibility continue to thrive. And that concludes my report. Superintendent Smith, excuse me.
Thank you, President Garland. So first, it's Women's History Month. I want to thank you for your leadership on this historic board of five women. And I also want to thank all the women leaders in the Cherry Creek School District who impact the lives of students every single day in Cherry Creek School District. I've been kind of a downer the last couple of months with my comments, looking at the forecast of school finance. But we got a celebration. One, it was amazing to see the brilliance of our students down at the Capitol advocating for themselves and advocating for their peers. The other thing we received this month is our district's success survey. I just want to share three pieces of information off of that survey. First, ninety-three percent of our staff says that they have a trusted coworker that they can go to in times of need. That is huge. The other piece, eighty-nine percent of our staff are proud to work in the Cherry Creek School District. We're not perfect, but it's better here than anyplace else. And eighty-nine percent of our staff feel that they make a difference in the lives of students every single day that they show up to work and get satisfaction from their job. These results are unheard of across this country. The organization Qualtrics had to redo their calibration on our district's survey because they haven't seen results across this nation, and they work with thousands of school districts across the United States. But that is because of the staff of Cherry Creek. I want to thank them for all that they do, their constant effort to make the lives of our students better and each other better. And I want to echo Ms. Bates. Please take next week, rest, take time with your families, and be ready for the end of the school year, because here it comes. Thank you, President Garland. I'd like to introduce Dr. Tony Poole for our presentation tonight under Special Populations. Dr. Poole?
I will also add, just as a reminder to our guests, the board has seen this presentation several times, so it can be a little bit pared back today.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. I also would like to start the presentation off by recognizing that someone has a birthday today. Ms. Kelly Bates turned twenty-one today. And how does she choose to spend it? Right here at a school board meeting. And Ms. Allen, I understand you have a birthday this weekend? No, it's canceled? Okay, we'll celebrate that at the Coliseum, hopefully, huh? Let's see how that goes. All right.
That's why we have the mariachi band.
Oh, all right. Okay, so I'll just jump right in. I do have my special populations direct them last week, so I won't reintroduce them, but I want to thank them for coming. So it's just a quick Special Populations update, just to show how we're progressing on the strategic plan and other information from that department. So we're going to start off with Early Childhood, also known as preschool. Our Director Stacy Peoples is sick, so she is not here tonight. She offered to get medicated and come, and I said no, that the rest of us did not want to get sick. But by the numbers, preschool, you can see how this breaks out. We do have a large preschool population. We're up to two thousand and sixty students now. Universal Preschool brings in about fifteen hundred of those students, so Universal Preschool has definitely become a very popular thing in Cherry Creek. And then, when you look at our Special Education students, I would point out that of the six hundred and seventy-two of those students, about three hundred and thirty-five of them have severe needs. We are seeing an increase in severe needs students coming into preschool in the last few years. By the numbers, you can look at it from just post-COVID and see how preschool has grown. That first year of Universal Preschool in twenty-three, twenty-four should have been a much higher number, but the state registration system was so confusing that, you know, a lot of families weren't able to participate. We started to register those families on our own, and that is why you've seen the increase this year. Successes in progress. Probably the greatest success we've had is moving these four-year-old students into our elementary schools and having them be welcomed as part of the elementary school community. Our principals at the elementary school have been incredibly wonderful about bringing in these kiddos and adding another grade and helping this be successful and making everyone feel welcomed. We do have a streamlined registration process in Cherry Creek as well, and that has benefited our families. And amazingly, our Early Childhood Department is fully staffed. They even have a little bit of extra, which will help because there is a high turnover there. More successes in progress. Colorado shines is how the state grades preschools. All of our preschools have a rating of four. It's almost impossible to get a rating of five, so we do have highly rated preschools. That's definitely a success. They're a strong professional learning community. Stacy Peoples has led that work for years, and they've been at the forefront of getting their staff to participate twice a week, or twice a month, in professional learning communities. They're also being trained in trauma-informed practices and transdisciplinary play-based assessments. And then we look at hurdles. The biggest hurdle right now is the Department of Early Childhood from the state. They really need to focus on funding, not trying to run enrollment because it doesn't work very well for them. We can't directly enroll or place kids in bridge care. We're hoping that a Senate bill might address this. Funding reconciliations are difficult with the state, and there are family participation gaps because of some of the state processes. Other systemic hurdles, there's a sped funding shortfall that always hurts us, especially in Universal Preschool. There are freezes to the CCC, the CC cap, which actually helps low-income families. The state has frozen that funding. We're not sure if it's going to come back. And then, we struggle with a lot of licensing regulations in preschool that can make it difficult. They're redundant, and they really don't fit in our school environment. And we have space constraints in Cherry Creek. We don't have any empty buildings, so it is difficult to find space for all of our preschool needs. Our strategic adjustments for twenty-five and twenty-six next year, this slide would have been fantastic. I think that Stacy and her staff put some great thoughts into how to make up for some of the shortfall. They were very thoughtful about it and how we could increase staffing to children. But we are now hearing that the state may cut universal preschool funding and that we may not be able to offer this many hours, and so this whole plan might be out the window. We will have to wait and see what the legislature does next. Language supports and services under the direction of Dr. Holly Porter. This is our multilingual learners. And you can see, the topic of immigration has been a hot one for the last couple of years, and you can see how our growth progressed through February of this year. We had sixteen hundred and ninety-eight immigrants into the district. You can see the languages that are spoken. We do have a lot of languages spoken in this district. We now have over eight thousand four hundred and seventy-one multilingual learners in Cherry Creek, making the LSAS department the largest of the Special Populations Department. Special populations, actually, if you count up all the kids that we serve in all of our departments, we serve over half of the students in the district. Percentage of population is at sixteen percent, and then you can see our non-English proficients are right around thirteen hundred students. And note, that note on the bottom is important. Not all NEP students are newcomers or new to the country. Many of these kiddos are actually born in the United States. Number of newcomers, new to English and new to the country, actually sits at three hundred and sixty-nine. Our supports for these kiddos, the Rose Community Foundation has been fantastic. We had a two-year grant that paid for some great supports. They had newcomer teachers and cultural liaisons and trainings that we provided, and unfortunately, this grant is coming to an end. So we will have to find something to backfill those supports. Other supports, we have our school-based welcome liaisons at the Hollies, Overland, Prairie, and Village. These liaisons work with kids new to the country for a few days before getting them into the classroom, and then they also support parents with questions and resources. We have our cultural liaison, seventeen folks, supporting eleven languages district-wide. These folks support schools with whatever needs arise. There's like Time at West every morning, or additional support at the Overland and the Hollies. They run parent academies, and they help us with international family welcome days in the summer. Our program leads are also another support for newcomers. The program leads and partners, there's seven people who actually are out supporting the schools. These folks are more content and instructional experts in the world of multilingual learners, so they're helping out with co-teaching and assisting the newcomer classes. Celebrations, thirty-seven teachers in this district have already completed the first round of the ASU cohort to earn their culturally, linguistically diverse endorsement, and we've already hired three of them into our department. On access, the LSAS test, the statewide test, our median growth percentile is a district forty, eight percentage points above the adequate growth percentile defined by the state. No schools had low growth on access, and seventy-four percent individually met their adequate growth percentile. And the graduation rate for MLs has remained at ninety percent or higher since two thousand and seventeen. And then, we have a celebration in exceeds for multilingual learners on our school performance frameworks. The following schools ranked in the exceeds category for both median growth percentile and on-track-to EL proficiency on their school performance framework. This is especially difficult to achieve at the high school level, but we had two high schools do it. So that was quick, but a great list of schools and a great celebration. And then, our breaking news that is no longer breaking because now it's over a week old, sorry, Holly, but still, congratulations to Holly Porter, two thousand and twenty-five case distinguished service award winner for her years of service to multilingual learners. Okay, neurodiverse student services under the direction of Rebecca Lopez. By the numbers, you can see the growth that we've had in our students identified as gifted and talented coming out of COVID. The number that you see there for twenty-four, twenty-five is just as of the end of February, April, March, April, and May are heavy, heavy identification seasons, so we will see that number go up significantly. Our strategic plan update, the NSS department continues to go out and meet individually with every school, with the principal and the GT teacher, and they look at that individual school's proportionality scorecard and identify places where kids can be identified to help reach proportionality in our GT identifications. Those occurred in September and October and January. There was a mid-year update meeting with the principals, and now in April and May, that department will go out and meet with all of those principals again to share year-end data and get ready for next year. Talent identification is still a continued focus, and we have ongoing training and support for our teachers in equitable identification practices. And then, excitingly, we have a change in our universal screener practice. So the universal screener at second and sixth grades is the COGAT, and that is the state-approved screener. We do that, but what our department has now started doing is isolating that data by the local population in that school, looking at the top five percent of students who didn't hit the mark, and then recommending them for further testing. When we do that, we find that more than half of those students actually do qualify for gifted and talented services on the follow-up tests. So the department is actually mining deeper into the data, building a bigger body of evidence, and then helping to identify more students. Talent pool growth is continuing to go up for us. Those numbers are as of February twenty-fifth for this year. That talent pool hopefully will get up to about nine hundred to a thousand. Celebrations in NSS in August and in January, you can see the schools that had equitable data. I won't read all of those to you, but we are seeing great growth in schools becoming equitable and having proportionality. Our twice exceptional population is booming. We are seeing a dramatic increase in identifications. A hundred and eighty-eight new 2E students identified since August. That's about one a day. 2E students now make up thirty percent of the gifted and talented population. We also have our 2E center-based programs. These are unique in all of the country. We have them at Arrowhead and High Plains Elementary. Robert, thank you. See you in the back. But these are serving gifted students with moderate to severe disabilities, and these are really students who in the past we have struggled to serve because of their disabilities and their giftedness. And then finally, more breaking news. It's also a week old, so it's not breaking anymore, but definitely news. The World Council for Gifted and Talented Children, two thousand and twenty-five World Congress in Braga, Portugal. The theme, "The Power of Gifted Education and Talented Development in a Changing World." Rebecca Lopez, Director of NSS, was accepted for not one, but two presentations at this conference that is attended by gifted leaders from around the world. She will be presenting on her first session on serving the uniquely gifted, severe needs, twice exceptional center-based programming, and her second session, Equity in Action: Attaining Proportional Identification in Gifted Programming. Congratulations, Rebecca Lopez. And Special Education update. Our strategic planning work in special education is around disproportionality. Our strategic planning work in special education is around disproportionality, but we also have to answer to the Colorado Department of Education for the indicators in special education that they track. One of the things that we got dinged on by CDE is that they identified that we have disproportionate discipline for students who are on IEPs by race. Black students in this district are being suspended out of school for more than 10 days at a rate that is higher than their peers of other races, about three and a half times more. When that occurs, the Colorado Department of Education requires us to have a remediation plan. And so we are now working on our action plan that so far will include professional development with deans, APs, sped teachers, and others, building-wide de-escalation training, and some FBA training and behavior intervention plan training, and more to come. So we are excited to actually work with Derek Mullner and the EdOp Group and his part of the strategic plan to identify this problem. As you look at our part under the strategic plan for proportional identification of sped students, the Colorado Department of Education recognizes that we are, in fact, proportional in our identification of sped students, and not only by race, but also by disability category, which is a great celebration. New programs and initiatives, we have Sped Hub. That's going to be one-stop shopping for all your sped resources, the answer to everything you ever wanted to know about special education but were afraid to ask. You'll find it in Sped Hub. North Star, this is our new affective needs community for middle school students. It is now at Falcon Creek. It was developed and open, and it has been quite successful. We also now have elementary sped coordinators. We've never had that before, so there's one identified lead sped teacher in every elementary school, and they receive extra training, and they are our point of contact. And then we have our ILC redesign as well. We tried this out at three schools that were short-staffed, and it's just a way of trying to meet staffing needs creatively using SLPAs, CODAs, OTs, and different staff, psychologists, social workers, and that has been quite successful as well. We've also looked at expanding our continuing services at secondary schools. We've done an educational benefit review, which followed the CDE format that we had last year, and then we've engaged in professional activity units, trainings, and BCBA skill-based trainings. Our enrollment in special education continues to increase, about 101 students this year so far, according to our December count. That's pretty standard. Ever since I came into this job 13 years ago, we've grown anywhere from 100 to about 500 special education students a year. So Cherry Creek definitely seems to still be a destination district for families with students with special needs. Oops. And finally, our celebrations, obviously the proportional representation and the appropriate identification. Our North Star students academic growth, more student-centered and school-supported problem-solving processes. And then, interestingly, we're increasing the accessibility of CCIC. 17% of CCIC students on IEPs now with a 58% increase in applicants for next year. So we're getting more of our sped students into CCIC and getting them those opportunities. And with that, I will take questions.
Just like to add one thing, Dr. Poole. I'd like to thank David Gutridge, Norrie Marsh. I know you're leaving us at the end of this year. We just want to thank you for your decades of service in the Cherry Creek School District, and thank you for what you did.
Thanks for abandoning me, guys.
Thank you. Director Allen, do you have any questions?
Just one. Is it possible that you're missing a celebration about Dakota Valley and their excellence in growth for their multilanguage learners? I'm only asking because one of my really good friends happens to be there and heard that they are being commended for their excellence in growth.
Holly?
Dakota Valley? Oh, West, I missed it. It was so fast. You got through everything so quickly that I blinked. So anyway, that was...
Sorry about that one.
It was far away, and I don't like wearing my glasses. I'm a little unconscious, so there's that.
Well, I'm glad you corrected that because for the millions of people watching at home, we want them to know that Dakota Valley got that award.
I think, I love when people come with me showing the pride that they have in their schools and their achievements, so...
Love it.
I'm glad that you had it up there. Now I mentioned, now we mentioned it twice. I don't have any questions. I am so amazed at how quickly you're able to really capture each of the special populations groups in a way that's accessible to us so we can, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing for all of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And to my directors' credit, they have to do the same thing for me, explain it to me in a way that I can capture too, because their work is highly technical. And I think the interesting thing about this department is each of them are content specialists in addition to being leaders, and they are very specifically well-trained in what they do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Allen. Director Bates?
All right. Thank you again for this presentation. I had most of my questions answered the other day, I believe, but I do, I appreciate what you just said about your directors, and I think you have a phenomenal team, and so I appreciate the work that they do with the special populations that we have because those kids, everybody's kids needs to be served, and so I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Bates. Director Knowles?
Thank you so much. I do have some questions.
Yeah.
Curious with North Star, how does one get enrolled in that program?
And North Star is actually a placement, so that would be just like our elementary school affective needs programs. It would be just like our twice exceptional programs. That is an IEP placement because it is a very restrictive setting, so you do have to qualify to go there because of the needs that you're showing in your current setting and that you need a higher level of service.
So like a principal or a teacher or someone would recommend a student or...
They can, but in general, it comes out of the special education teams. Principals certainly let us know when they have students that are struggling, and then the IEP team has to go in, have a reevaluation, look at the present levels, and decide that North Star is an appropriate setting.
And what are the max amount of kids that you think you could take at North Star?
In general, we try to keep those programs around eight to 10 students per teacher. Any more than that, and it's not conducive to learning. So about 16 would make North Star feel very big.
And it's, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say one thing. You know, I need to commend Tony on that, Dr. Poole, on that move. These are students that we would have had to look for outside services for these students, so being able to keep them inside of our school district continues to make them feel that they are a part of our family because they are part of our family. So I just want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to our security team at Falcon Creek Middle School because they do a ton of work when students need time to walk the building or need time to go outside and just regroup. The security team at that school has really embraced them under their wing, so I just wanted to recognize that as well.
And I have to give credit to Lee Williams, too. Lee, this was Lee's idea, and Lee did the groundwork to get, you know, Falcon Creek to be willing to house this program, and she went out and picked out the space, and Lee's done a great job helping lead that program, and this is doing really good work for kids who really need it.
That's great. Can I ask you about Link as well? Would that be you?
Not really. That's more Christy Hart, but I could make something up.
I gotta get...
You know what? I could make something up and make Christy accountable for it.
That's okay. That's all right. I'll ask Christy on the side. So March, April, May being months for high identification of GT, talk about that. Like what, how does it end on those months usually?
Does it ever end, Rebecca? But go ahead. How does that work out?
Got it.
It's kind of a snowballing identification process. You start with that small body of evidence, and as the snowball gets bigger, then you make the identification, and I think the snowballs get big in March, April, and May.
Yeah, makes sense. And then just wanted to ask for, for multilanguage learners, is it, once you're a multilanguage learner, you are always one, or is it kind of like when we talked about the student immigrant, where for three years, you know, that is who you are, and then you no longer are?
So yes, the state does require us to have those students English proficient within three years, so it is not a lifetime thing.
Okay. I didn't know, just because you might...
No, Holly's shaking her head no.
Okay, because you know multiple languages for forever, I would, you know, so I... So once you are proficient, you're no longer considered a multi... Okay. Forever, okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Knowles stole my question. I was going to ask about the multilingual learners as well, but... Sure. And so, and then, I just have a comment. I'm just happy and excited, and thank you to everyone for working on the issue of disproportionality. It's just, I think that's one of the things that's important and that we are sticking to that, and I love that. And also, I just always applaud the experience of my children because when I was in school, particularly special education was like down the hall, blank classroom, just, you know, not a part of the, not a part of the building. So I appreciate that we work hard to include all of our students and that all of our kids are exposed to one another, that we all learn from each other, and so thank you for working hard at doing that. And I don't think we have any more questions. Good to go.
Thank you.
All right. Now it's time for audience comments. I don't, do we have any, do we have any?
We do not have any public speakers this evening.
All right. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolutions 25.3.1 through 25.3.7.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Directors Allen?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Garland?
Aye.
Knowles?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next regular meeting is April 14th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, and it will be held at West Middle School, 5151 South Holly Street in Greenwood Village. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn our March 10th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Directors Allen?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Garland?
Aye.
Knowles?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our meeting is adjourned.